Every time. Good evening. I'd like to open the Bethel Planning and Zoning Commission Agenda for July the 11th, 2023. It would start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This time, we'd like to have the Commission and staff introduce themselves. We want to start with Bob.
Bob Legner, member.
You.
Kenny Person.
Linda Curtis.
Ken Stevens.
Kenny Kessler.
Rob Hall.
Beth Quebec now. Planning Director, I have Jolene from the Building Department filling in as the Secretary this evening. And observing her is Amanda Martinez, who's graciously offered to help me in the office.
Welcome.
Dave McCollum, Land Use Coordinator.
Thank you. I don't see any other members on the board online. Very good. Okay, before we get started with the formal agenda, I'd just like to read our personal electronic device policy. Please note for the record that any personal electronic devices used by Commission members is for the purpose of reviewing materials located in the Google Drive on the town's website.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to bring to your attention that Paul Shanley is on Zoom. Another member is present.
Great, thank you. Welcome, Paul. So first on our agenda are public hearings that have been continued. First on the agenda is East Station Place, 61 South Street. That will be continued to our 7/25/23 meeting. No testimony received this evening. Second is J A R Associates, 185 Brassie Plains Street. That's to be continued as well.
I understand that a continuance is being asked for that matter, 185.
Correct. Peter Olson, on behalf of the applicant, we're still working on revising our engineering plans. However, we had our butterfly expert visit the property today, so that may close the loop on that issue.
So we're tabled until next time?
Yes, please.
Next is 2224 Nashville Road LLC and Arena. Amazi.
Amazi.
Amazi, I'm sorry.
Yeah. I can ask, David, could you please bring up the Google Street View that we submitted at the last public hearing?
Okay.
Good evening. Thank you again for hearing us. My name is Peter Olson. I'm an attorney with an office here in Bethel at 275 Greenwood Avenue. My firm name is Land Use and Conservation Council. I'm here tonight on behalf of 22 Nashville LLC and Ilarina Pamazie. The two are the owners of the property located at 22 Nashville Road and 24 Nashville Road, respectively. We held an initial public hearing on this request for a zone map amendment a month ago now and came back to allow people to view the property. And frankly, we wanted to do a little more investigation as well. David's brought the Google Street View that we submitted into the record up onto the screen. And as you can see, the property, this is 22 Nashville primarily, is approved for the metal industrial building. My client runs his commercial business out of the property. And then next door is a single-family residential home on 24 Nashville Road. Just I'll briefly sort of summarize where we've been on this. The properties, both of them are currently zoned R10. They consist of .23 and .233 acres respectively. They're a combined total of .463 acres or just over 20,000 square feet. The request is to change the zoning district for both properties to Village Center as the base zone with a TOD overlay on top of it. We went through at the last meeting the neighborhood, the history, and why we believe that this is an appropriate change for this area. There was a number of comments at the first public hearing regarding traffic. Now, traffic is not something I can solve at this stage of any proceedings. And so when we have a site plan application in front of you, we will hire a traffic expert. And the person that we will hire is Joe Boskis, who's appeared in front of you before. Joe worked on the intersections of Greenwood Avenue and Chestnut Street, as well as Nashville Road and Chestnut Street when the Carol Louises Project was done. And everybody may have an opinion as to how that's functioning, me including. But Joe knows this better than anybody. So we will bring him in and we will get his input on whether there's anything that can be done as part of our development to alleviate any of the traffic concerns that are out there. But in the meantime, I asked Joe to prepare a memorandum about what the effect of a residential apartment building on these two properties replacing the two uses that are there with you today. We submitted this memorandum to the electronic file yesterday. And it's very brief and very general, but I have some extra copy if anybody would like them. Essentially, the last two paragraphs are the money paragraphs, where it is expected that, he says, the expected traffic generation will be less than projected due to work from home as well as, but I'm sorry, this is, he's saying why there should also be less traffic in the future. The project will generate low amounts of traffic on the adjacent roadway network and is expected to have a negligible impact on traffic operations. Even though we all think we know how the intersection of South Street and Nashville Road works, Joe's opinion is changing from this commercial use to a residential use won't have any impact on the operations of that intersection. We need to keep in mind that the commercial use is about 20 trips and peak point now when my client and his employees come to work, they come in the personal cars, they park in there, they take business trucks offsite, go to their job, and then they come back. So there's already a significant amount of traffic during these hours. So we don't believe that any impact on traffic will exist. We will certainly look at things that can be done to alleviate situations out there when we get to the site like this. But I hope that you don't consider that to be a reason to not make the change in the first place. After the last hearing, we had Zach Rap go out and stake the rear of the property so that people could see how far back it actually went. Zach is very busy. It took him a while to get that done, but it was eventually done. So I hope people had a chance to go take a look at it. So that's all that we have for tonight. We think this is an appropriate and reasonable request in the downtown, and we hope that you are willing to grant it. Thank you.
Open this up for public comment questions. If you'd like to speak, please come forward, state your name and your address and address your comments to the Commission. After all, comments have been heard. The applicant and/or the Commission will comment.
Allison Litch, Sainte-Marie, Forte-Nou, Tannad, I think of this too. To Land Use.
When did you do it?
Earlier today. So I'm going to read it out loud.
Please do. I'm sorry. Can I just, before you speak, we don't have access to the Land Use email since Nancy left him Friday, and so I apologize.
Okay, no worries. So that's why I put this to read it.
Tell me again.
Allison, Sainte-Marie. So please accept this public input and add to the record of the 2224 Nashville Road Request for TOD Zone Overlay. After attending the first meeting where the project was proposed and reading through the project and other public comments, I caution the Planning and Zoning Commission against approving this zone overlay request. Though the property currently is in the R10 zone, it is the first after the TOD in the Village Center zone. Then there's always going to be a next property. Extending both the zones for the TOD and the VC would not be in the best interest of those neighbors in the town. Currently, that cornering street have no connecting sidewalks to downtown. You have addressed the traffic issues, but as neighbors pointed out, there needs to be more done and studied and addressed as part of a larger plan of development. And how does this commit, does this commission, could this commission could benefit from reusing, refusing this map amendment and keeping the property's current status while the larger vision of the TOD and development are discussed? Currently, there is nothing to be gained with a 12-unit apartment development for that area of Bethel. It's an added burden on town infrastructure.
Anyone else? Mr. Wild.
Dr. Wild, 31 Nashville Road Extension. Do we have the capability to show the email that you expect?
No.
No? Okay. I'll make my comments brief then. Last time I was here, I was trying to make the case for the preservation of the house that would have to be demolished in order to accomplish this project. And I was able to track down more of the history of the property. The earliest map we have of downtown Bethel dates to 1856. The house is there on that map. So we know the house has been around for at least 167 years. The other thing I was able to dig up was fire insurance maps of that area going back to 1895. And what's interesting is that this has always been, long before Bethel had any planning and zoning, it's always been the demarcation spot between commercial enterprises and residential use. And as you look at 22 Nashville Road, to the left of that, there's always been some kind of commercial or industrial business. Everything beyond that point has always been residential. And we just, again, try to make the case that this is a house that's been a part of our town for a long time. And I would like to see it continue to be a part of our town. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anybody have their hand raised? David?
I'm not seeing any hands raised at this time, Mr. Chairman, but I will just give a quick reminder that if you do want to raise your hands, you would click the reactions icon in the toolbar at the bottom of the Zoom app. And from there, you can raise your hands. Raising your hand helps us establish a queue for those who want to offer public comments. In all that time, I still see no hands raised, Mr. Chairman.
Great. Thank you very much, Commission members. Comments?
Yeah. Just two comments in reply.
Sure.
I hope you may be a Commission members on the screen.
Bob, any questions? Or Paul?
No questions for me.
No questions, just one comment. I just think a more appropriate use of the property would, instead of a 14 units, might be like a townhouses or something like that, maybe like a transitional look from a building on what Mr. Wild just said, how it's been kind of like the line between commercial to the residential there. Maybe having a transitional from commercial to, to, to the R10. You know, to just traditional houses there. Maybe more, like I said, more, more appropriate use might be something more along the lines of some townhouses in there. I don't know how many. May, maybe four units, maybe six units you can get in there instead of an apartment building. That's just, that's just my opinion. So just more of a comment than a question. But thank you.
Thank you, Paul. All right. Anybody else online? No hands raised? David?
From the public? No, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Olson?
Thank you. Just a couple of responses. In terms of the concept that there's nothing to be gained from this change, I strongly disagree. I don't mean to disparage the manner in which my client runs his business, but there's a contractor's yard, a commercial contractor's yard with trucks and ladders everywhere. Converting that in the middle of the downtown to a residential use is definitely something to be gained. But I think that would be an enhancement to that part of the town. In terms of this start, which obviously it's an old house, you know, we agree with that. And when we develop our site plans, we will look at whether or not the house can be saved as part of redevelopment. But we don't think so. The foundation needs to go. And old houses are wonderful. They're also great places to light money on fire. And sometimes they just, they just can't serve the purpose of the modern day. So we'll look at it. We do it too, that we will look at it. Come up with alternatives that, you know, possibly could save it. But I don't want anybody to get their hopes up as to what the condition is. And then in terms of density and style, what we showed, it was one concept of what this could be, an apartment building. There's many ways we can develop property, but the zone change has to happen first in order to give us that flexibility. So that's all you have. Thank you.
Thank you, staff. I will close the public hearing. Thank you very much for your time. Next on the agenda is new public hearings. First one is 19 Stony Hill Road Site Plan, Donald Quainton, a special permit veterinary hospital. Come on, let's run it. Introduce yourself. Tell us who you represent.
I'm David Quainton. I represent Danbury Animal Hospital. Actually, I'm currently in Danbury and we're hoping to move our practice to a bigger facility.
Do you read the public hearing notice? The legal notice? That's what I know, because it's not there.
To appear June 30th and July 7th, 2023, public notice. The Bethel Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a public hearing on July 11th, 2023 at 7:00 PM in Conference Room D of the Municipal Center, One School Street, Bethel, Connecticut, to hear the following. Donald Quainton's for property located at 19 Stony Hill Road for a special permit to use the above address as a veterinary hospital. The property can be found in the assessors' records as map 59 Lot 9 Block 096 and Lot 02. A link to review the materials can be found on the town's website. The public may send comments via regular mail and email to landuse@bethelct.gov. Parking for gearing is located to the rear of the building. Ken Stevens, chairman of that.
I do have a few little comments.
I'm sorry. Don't go right ahead.
I know. You keep saying that. I know. I'm sorry.
I feel like I'm not helping here.
For all the rest of the evening. In regards to this, the applicant's requesting a special permit in order to renovate the existing property at 19 Stony Hill. It's property that's located right next to the 711. There's no exterior renovations proposed, overnight general. And boarding of animals will not take place. That's the most important thing. Anytime you want to do a veterinary hospital in any zone within the town, it's considered a special permit. Reason for that is because usually there's association of kind of like boarding and things of that nature. I'm sorry.
So again, I represent Danbury Animal Hospital. We've been in Danbury since 2020 in our location. We've been at the hospital, at business since 2017. And both my wife and I, she and I, that's I've been in some sort of veterinary practice since 1994. So we kind of have a good idea of what we're doing and what to expect. With our current place, we do no overnights. We do no emergency. We do, the emergency clinics in the area are much better these days. So it's more of a bushkeep practice. It's not like a Newtown that makes it, it's, we are not into around 4:30 and that's, I'm sure, you know, itchy around 4:00. My wife and I have done the 20-hour shifts and we've done the whole night and it's not something we're going to do. There will be no boarding outside. Very rarely do we even hospitalize animals. They come to us, we sort of, as I say, you demonstrate them. You treat them and you sort of send them on their way because there's not a whole lot of benefit other than overnights, in which they would go to a practice that does that, that's already set up. So we want to sort of be more like that. We plan to do privacy fences. You know, we plan to pick up all of our waste. There's not a whole lot difference that we are, say, a dental office, because clients come in, clients leave. Again, no weekends, no after hours, no runs outside, no boarding, nothing like that. So I do have updated maps for you. There was a question about the dumpster site.
From the Health Department?
From the Health Department. And per where I am, instead of being here, moved in here, I have questions.
Just keep it with a five.
Right over there, you know, we'll have the proper pad. As far as waste, do you guys want? As far as, you know, sharps raised and weapons, we have an external company that takes all that away. We turn it inside in boxes and bags. They kind of pick it up.
Before you continue, the Child Department did submit a couple of pages of material and comments. Just very briefly, the comments were, number one was addressing the garbage. It appears that the applicant has addressed that. And they always mention the mosquitoes and West Nile virus prevention, things of that nature. It's interesting, there is an onsite water supply there. It is well. And again, the applicant in the Health Department, I'm very comfortable with whatever they're going to work out, they'll work out if they're going to connect or if they're not going to connect. So I, there, nothing in this, they have no objection to the approval of the conversion of the existing facility into a veterinary hospital by Bethel Planning and Zoning Commission with the inclusion of these conditions, which always are. That's all I have for you.
The issues, is it connected now?
No, they were.
It's, it's.
Yeah.
Mr. Quainton, for the benefit of the commissioners that are participating on Zoom, do you mind describing the relocation of the dumpster pad that's shown on the screen?
Yes, so it went from the southwest corner to the southeast corner. I was informed by Department of Health that that the southwest corner was adjacent to a residential pool. And like, not a great idea. And actually, when we put that dumpster in that original drawing, we did it more as like a placeholder because I hadn't gotten information back from Department of Health or the refuse company about it. Couldn't put it. So once I figured out that I could put it in that back southeast corner, that's where I wanted it anyway. I just wasn't sure if the truck could make it around. So we were able to move it there. Yeah.
Okay.
There it is, 35 feet away from the well. So I know it has to be at least 25 feet. Will be that six to eight inch concrete pad with a fence enclosure in it, most likely two dumpsters. Maybe one dumpster and three cans. We're still sort of working that out as far as recycling and other things. They all be littered, et cetera.
Are there any other changes shown on this survey that you pointed out to the Commission?
No, sir.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Going to open it to the public. Do you have any questions from the public? David, anybody have their hands raised on? Zoom.
I'm not seeing any hands raised at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Permission and questions?
Yeah, just a quick question. I know that in some, with some veterinarians, they may leave medications outside for the humans to get up. Is that something that you plan to continue, that you plan to do?
We hope to continue that. Currently, the way we do it at our hospital mainly such a COVID-driven is leaving it out. People can pick it up, but we will always have that under the door at once. That all works. We plan to get you that.
Thank you.
Any questions from staff?
No.
David?
No questions for me at this time. Did Mr. Legner and Mr. Shanley have any questions?
Go next.
No questions. Things of great use of the property.
Thank you, Paul. Bob?
This permit does not increase the size of the building at all. Police says the same, right?
Correct.
That's all.
Thank you, Bob. And I'm going to close the public hearing. Thank you very much. Next on the agenda is Begel LLC, special permit for retail sale of agricultural products by non-resident, 150 Putnam Park Road. Do we have a legal notice? We have a legal notice.
So a public notice to appear June 30th and July 7th, 2023, the Bethel Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a public hearing on July 11th, 2023 at 7:00 PM in Congress Room D of the Municipal Center, One School Street, Bethel CT, here in the following. Begel LLC for property located at 150 Putnam Park Road for a special permit to permit the retail sales of agricultural products grown on the premises, including accessory activities to be conducted by the owner. The property can be found in the assessor's records as map 44 Block 47A and Lot 191. A link to review the materials can be found on the town's website. The public may send comments via regular mail and email to landuse@bethelct.gov. The party for the hearing will be in your building. Ken Stevens, chairman.
For the, do you have a staff report?
It's attached to the, it's attached to what they already have.
Okay. David, can you please bring up the sketch? Do you have access to that?
It's very binary, Peter.
Just one attorney, Olson?
Yep, there you go. And scroll to the right and zoom in.
Okay. That's as close as I'm getting.
Okay.
My staff report is as follows. Property owner is requesting a special permit to allow for the retail sales of agricultural products grown on the premises. I cite the regulation, the applicant should give a detailed listing of the proposed products produced on the property and incidental accessory products for review as part of any consideration of an approval or decision.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Peter Olson. I'm an attorney with an office here in Bethel at 275 Greenwood Avenue. My firm name is Land Use and Conservation Council. I'm here tonight on behalf of Begel LLC, which is the owner of the property at 150 Putnam Park Road. Begel is represented by Yelena Shapayeva, sitting in the front row here. Last year, Begel purchased the front parcel here of about eight acres. I think the old owner was standing on the mound. Correct. We have some really cool plans for the property that we look forward to presenting to you when we're ready. But in the meantime, we're cleaning up the property and we planted a field of vegetables, tomatoes and cucumbers. And when they're ready, we'd like to sell them on site. Now, since we submitted this application today, the local wildlife has helped themselves a little bit to. So maybe it won't be as prolific a crop as we expected. Section 3.6 E of your regulation contains provisions for agricultural uses. And retail sales of agricultural products grown on the premises are allowed in the zone, so R10 zone. However, operation by a non-resident of the premises requires a special permit from the Commission. Begel is the owner. Principles of Begel are Yelena and her husband Janelle. They live in Reading. And LLC can reside on the property, obviously. So they will be the ones during the sale of of the produce on the property. So hopefully, this will be temporary in nature as we bring our master plan to fruition and come to you for approval of that to be determined in the future. And we'll end the farm standard sale of produce when we pull it into that operation at that. We submitted a survey that Zach wrapped it of the entire parcel and sketched on there where we anticipated things would happen. You may know the house, the old house in the front at 150. We would have parking on the side with Putnam Park being our neighbor to the south. And perhaps parking to the rear if needed, with the vegetable stand behind the house, not in the front setback, which is a requirement of the ethical uses. So that's all we have. We think it's an extremely minor request that will allow functionally the owner of the property to, to, to self-ordered scrum on the property, even though we're not resident there. Thank you.
Any comments from the public? Questions? We have any hands raised online from the public, David?
I am seeing no hands raised at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Any questions from the Commission? Those, we'll start with Bob and Paul online.
Okay, I have a couple of questions. Do they ever intend to be the occupants of the front house?
No.
They don't?
No.
The second question is, will there be any signage involved out on Route 58?
I'm not sure, Yelena. Did you plan to put up a sign directing people to the farm stand?
I, I was thinking like Holbrook Farm.
Is, I'm sorry, this is Yelena Shapayeva.
Yes, so I was thinking like Holbrook Farm, they had like, we are open. And so people know that there is something going on, but nothing of like just noticeable thing that there is some vegetables being offered. And also it will be very small scale because half of the, it was cold this year, everybody not noticed. So there are half of the things are not coming as we planned. So it will be very just to have something going while everything has been organized.
So the answer, Bob, is yes, we'd have some small signage. We won't be able to put that in the state right away, obviously.
Okay, and one more question. It, it would just be, uh, vegetable products, not, uh, fertilizer or anything else that you would be selling?
No, no fertilizer, no.
Okay.
No eggways.
Yeah.
Mr. Shanley, any questions for the applicant?
Um, no questions. I think it's, uh, pretty cool and I wish you luck.
Thank you.
Commission members sitting here, any questions?
You said, uh, no fertilizer. Is it, uh, organic gardening? Do you use fertilizer on?
We actually plant a garden. Anybody welcome to drive by and see it's just there. And, uh, we purchased from eggways, some organic fertilizers to um, control the bugs, but it will be at the very minimal
Okay.
scale, but, uh, just regular vegetation.
Great.
Tomato, some cucumbers only planted.
You said something at the onset that maybe I misheard. Vegetables and other things, other things maybe being jars of honey or?
So the regulations allow sale of things not grown on premises, but only as an accessory use to the farm stand.
What types of items would we talk?
And right now we're just planting on tomatoes and cucumbers.
Okay, this year.
This year. Hopefully by next year, we've got our master plan in place and
Yeah.
we're doing more. Um, I, I, I'm trying to say right now.
Thank you. And?
You've got a long road to Ho-Hair.
You've been waiting to say that. It showed up on the agenda.
Farming in China, okay.
The other end, there's other farm stands on fifty-eight, so when people are going to those, maybe they'll stop by yours, so.
Anything else? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving to our business meeting. First, a comment on the minutes. Um, I sent some minor punctuation changes to the, uh, staff. Um, they didn't change the content of the minute, so I would make a motion that we approve the minutes that committed with my, uh, minor adjustments. Second, in favor? Paul and Bob, do we have an eye?
I wasn't there last week.
Thank you. Thank you, Bob.
Hi. Ken, did you see Rob?
Oh. Thank you. Now, I need to see for the record, Rob Wallace and Linda Curtis.
For who?
For Rich Vivids and
Kitty.
Kitty Grant.
Okay, he's not there.
Thank you. Um. Don't move on the minutes. Do we have any invoices?
Yes. Nancy did not pay her bills before she left. We have a news, uh, news times bill in the amount of nineteen hundred dollars and seventy cents, and that's covering uh, sixty-one South Street, eleven Sunset Hill. I mean, there's several.
Is that for public noticing?
Yes, it is.
I'll make a motion to pay the news times in the amount of nineteen hundred and seventy cents for public notices. Okay.
Thank you.
Hi.
Anyone against?
I'm just going to put in my thing. I'm going to do it every time we have invoices. Gotta be a better way. Gotta be a different way.
Motion so moved to pay the invoices.
Just, just, that's my comment.
I got it. Okay, new business. For Tim Draper, eight thirty G Affordable Housing, three unit building, forty-two Nashville Road, we have public notice.
No, you're accepting the application.
All right, do we have?
Please note for the record that I'm recusing myself in this application.
Who's here to represent the applicant?
It's for, it's um, just for scheduling. You're accepting the.
We're accepting the application and we will, uh, with staff recusing themselves and there's, um, other concerns with the review of the application. We can't set a public hearing until such time as the town has made a decision on who will review the application. Uh, we will take it up at our next meeting.
Beth?
I'm going to reseat myself.
I had a question on this one. Is this the old courtway property?
I don't know what you're talking about.
This is the, the farm.
Anna Lynn. Yes, there were courtways on there, kids.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Anna Lynn, Courtway. Doctor Courtway? Yes, yes.
That's what I thought.
Did I know something you don't know, Pat? I can't believe it after all these years. No, you're right. It took me a minute to think of it, but that's correct.
Yeah, it's a while ago.
Yeah.
Okay, next item on the agenda is
Well, it's unreceived, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Please note that for the record. McNichol subdivision, two lots, forty-five Maple Avenue extension.
Attached to your memo is, um, you asked me at the last meeting to do a, a motion for consideration.
Hey, I'm going to interrupt you. I'm going to recuse myself from this application. I missed the meetings when it was all discussed and I'm not up to date on it.
Thank you, Paul. It's all noted.
It's attached to my staff report.
And I missed what you said. I didn't hear.
We're reviewing, um, McNichol subdivision, two lots.
Yeah.
Forty-five Maple Avenue extension.
Yeah.
Um, on what was just handed out is the, um, recognition to approve.
Yeah.
Now, you may notice because it's the first time that we've had a subdivision or something normal of that nature. Um, is everybody familiar with the fee in lieu of open space? Yes. Okay, that's all I needed to know.
I move to approve a two lot subdivision as shown on a drawing prepared for TRM Investments LLC. Excuse me, and dated March eighth, twenty twenty-three, prepared by Rager, a stalker, L S number seven zero 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 nine, and identified in the assessment records as tax map thirty-nine block sixty-eight lot B with the following conditions, one through seven.
You have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Parsons. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Okay, Bob and Paul, you've recused yourself. So motion is so moved.
Mr. Chairman, in the future, can I remind you to do a roll? Yeah, that's okay. It's the hunger, it's the hunger pains.
Uh, any other additional comments from the public?
No, um, Mr. Chairman, before you continue, what I would like to do, um, is ask you to consider, you do have a heavy meeting next meeting. So I was wondering if you would possibly, uh, add under work session nineteen Stony Hill Road, the site plan and one fifty Putnam Park Road for discussion and possible action.
Okay.
And the fourth, you have to do a motion.
Do we have a motion to do that?
I move that we accept the application for nineteen Stony Hill Road. And add it to our work session.
Second.
So first we have to go to add it to the work session.
All in favor, by name, please.
Kenny.
Yes. And yes?
Yes.
Yes. Bob?
Bob, I'm going to die.
Paul Shanley, yes.
All right. So moved.
Okay, I move that we, um, approve the special permit for nineteen Stony Hill Road um, that will renovate the existing property for a veterinary hospital at nineteen Stony Hill Run, located in the Route Six Zone.
Second.
Can I ask you to amend that? To include the last, um, revision date of seven ten twenty-three for their site plan? And also include the health department memos of seven ten twenty-three, and that should cover you all.
Okay, that includes site plan from seven, from July tenth, twenty twenty-three, and information from the health department dated July tenth, twenty twenty-three.
And I'll clean that up.
All in favor?
Hi.
Names, please.
Was it high?
Hi.
Kenny Kessler, yes.
Rob Wallace, yes. Bob?
Yes.
Paul, yes.
So moved.
Can I ask that you add one fifty Putnam Park Road to the agenda for a possible discussion and action?
Motion to add one fifty Putnam Park Road to the work session for discussion of potential approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi. Kenny.
Bye.
Ken, yes?
Kenny, yes.
Rob, yes? Bob?
Bob, yes.
Paul Shanley, yes.
Okay. There any additional comments or questions or on the property?
I have a question. Is this like, um, they're just making, I just want to confirm there, is this not like a, uh, open-ended? Uh, what am I trying to say? It's not giving them permission to clear cut the property and make a giant farm, right? We're just doing, uh, pretty much farm stand like they've described.
I'll, I'll answer it and then I'll defer to staff to correct me. It's, it's a request to allow the sale of vegetables.
Yeah, it just seems pretty cut and dry to me.
And potentially assess the owners.
Yeah. I, I think it's pretty cut and dry to me and seems like, uh, I don't know. See, like I said, cut and dry.
Any other comments or questions?
Yeah.
All right, I would make a motion that we approve the application special permit to allow the retail sales of agricultural products growing on the premises at one fifty Putnam Park Road.
Second.
Can I make a suggestion to amend it to include, um, a sketch of the property on a survey dated one four twenty-two and I'll clean that up.
As Beth said, amend it to include the sketch.
Sketch on a survey dated one four twenty-two.
Thank you.
My second stance.
Okay, before we take a vote, I want to piggyback on what Paul said. So there's no, there's no limitation to how much space size that can be run, or is this? I ju, I just want to confirm.
Say, well, probably only within the law of, of what the property would allow, whether it was a resident or non-resident owner.
May, may I add some clarification to that, Beth and Mr. Chairman?
Certainly.
Okay, so I have been on the property, um, and there, um, there are some areas, there are some natural resources in the form of wetlands, as you saw on the site plans. So if, if you're talking about limitations in, in that perspective, they would have to be condescended of that. And they would have to get, um, any approvals in that capacity as needed if they wanted to expand. Um, their agricultural use towards that direction or towards the water, of course, in the property for that matter.
Thanks, David.
You're welcome.
All in favor, by name?
Kenny.
And Cleveland, yes?
Kenny, yes.
Rob Wallace, yes. Mr. Legnar?
Uh, Legnar, yes.
Paul Shanley, yes.
Don't move.
The second one, to be honest, I didn't know.
Who seconded the most?
I did.
Of Paul.
Okay. Thank you. Sorry about that.
No problem.
Okay.
Do you want to do any other discussion? The only other thing you have pending on the table this evening is twenty-two twenty-four Nashville Road.
Beth, I had a question about something.
Okay, what? And what, what matter?
South Street.
South Street is not on the table tonight for discussion. I can't even discuss it. Can't even ask a question.
All right.
You asked me privately, but you cannot discuss it.
All right.
Okay, we're still on the public hearing basis.
Are there any comments or questions or?
Do you want to add it? The question is, do you want to add twenty-two, twenty-two twenty-four to the agenda or?
I don't know if I'm ready to make a decision on that.
Just asking if you want to add it to the agenda, or do you want to continue on with the meeting with commission comments and public?
I would prefer.
Continue the meeting.
Nobody else is.
Yeah.
Okay, never mind. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. At this point, are there any additional comments from the public? Mr. Olson?
I have a very minor comment relating to invoices to the news times.
This is a personal comment, not representing anyone.
Uh, yes, and it's not even an opinion, but as Sir Kessler noted, we have to do it. We wish there was an alternative, but you charge every applicant a fee for publication of notice. So this isn't money the town is spending. This is money applicants are spending. We wish we didn't have to spend it. I don't know if you're charging enough. I don't know the publication is matchingly, the fee you're collecting, but, uh, my reflection is it's a hundred and twenty-five dollars um, for public hearing notice and a hundred dollars for, uh, publication of decision. Um, or to selectmen has the power to change your fee schedule if you think that's.
If we had time to do it, we would.
I just, it's come up in two meetings. I just didn't want to.
No.
To think that they're just throwing money away. But, you know, collecting it on hand and spending it too.
But I said we can always charge back the applicant too.
If it's extra, yeah.
Any comments from the public on Zoom? Will we close the meeting?
I'm not seeing any hands raised at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, anything else from staff?
No.
We have a motion to pros?
Both, both.
Excuse me.
I asked the public, I didn't get any input.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I mean, any more comments from the public, either in the room or online?
You did. I heard you.
Okay, everybody's good.
I have a comment.
Damn.
Go right ahead, Bob.
For the record, it took two people to play, replace Nancy.
That was good.
Well said.
Well said, Bob.
Very, very good.
Very nice.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Have a good evening.
Have a good night.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.